So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation to the extent, the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public has, can adequately access, access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approved minutes will be posted to my town government. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access, or by telephone audio only. I was just going to make a suggestion. Should any of the board members have any technical difficulties and lose access to the meeting? The meeting would reassess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting would be continued to another date agreed to by the board or adjourned until next scheduled meeting. Is that agreeable to everybody? Okay. I don't know that that was in any of the previous things that I've read before.
No, but that's a standard practice. That's a good, that's a good practice.
Yeah. Okay. So call the meeting to order at 7:03. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen, as I said, are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have some minutes from April 6 to approve. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, and I'll call for a vote. Aye.
Westaki, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay. Hi, Chief.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good. Margaret, do we have any correspondence?
No, we have no correspondence tonight.
Okay. And general public comment, I guess. So we'll, I don't know, I think we can go ahead and start with the chief. Go ahead, Chief Clark. You've got a monthly department report for us.
Yes, what I, what I have tonight is the report from activities for the month of March. It was a total of 62 incident responses. There was three structural fires. One was a serious one. We had on a 320 old central road or street there. There was eight fire responses which are miscellaneous, which the engine or one of the apparatus goes to. The motor vehicle accidents were way down. I think that's because everyone's home. So that's a good thing, and I'm sure Chief Galvin's smiling about that. And public service was very high. People asking for service, help with this, or help with that was 30. That's exceptionally high. But it's like, it's, it's nice to know that when people need the help that they'll reach out and ask, and we can go and help them in whatever capacity is needed. So the guys move on that really quick. We had one hazardous materials release, and then one gasoline diesel fuel leak down by the rotaries there on the road. So it's like, it was a pretty good month. But most of the month was done planning with the, for the COVID stuff, making sure our PPE supplies were up and good. We had, every Tuesday, we do our PPE inventory to make sure we're at an area that we're comfortable with. If any equipment is needed, there's been some reach outs to the MEMA, through MEMA to the caches for available equipment. There's been some that go up, that come through Berlin and go up to the, the regional dispatching up at Devon's, the Neshova Valley Regional Rec there. They get a thermometer so they could test people coming in and out of the facility, workers and visitors to take temps, some regular cleaning supplies. And then we got 300 units of eye protection from them. And we, and one other kind of like hotspot, and I don't even mean it negatively, is that we've been watching, we've had random visits in and out of there a couple of times a week for the three or four weeks now is Northbrook 1 and 2. We made one, and the report came back to me in a call from one of the residents there that they didn't have any gloves, they didn't have any mask. So we again went to MEMA on a Friday, and requested 300 units of the surgical mask at their cache in Marlborough. The masks were delivered, we went and picked them up, but they were delivered back to Berlin on Saturday. Then on Sunday, Easter morning, the on-duty staff distributed them throughout the Northbrook 1 and the Northbrook 2 so that they have some, some face protection on the, for the occupants. It went very well. They seemed to be comfortable with that, and we monitor it. The personnel were in there today. We're probably going to get ready in the next couple of days, maybe to ramp up again and do another distribution of the, of the masks there for them. But they seem to be, on the things that we're dealing with, I know they got some other issues with tenants and stuff like that, or the work not being done. That's a whole different kind of boat to look at. But on what we're dealing with, the COVID stuff, it seems to be in really good shape there. And I've been in, had multiple discussions with MEMA on a daily basis. They call the check-in, one of the regional managers. And that's a topic of conversation at least three or four times a week about the potential there. If, but it's been really good so far. We keep an eye on it, sometimes up close, sometimes, you know, from back a little bit of distance on it. But it's always there, and it's like, and it's a, congestion is there. And then the other thing is their predisposition to any inhalation of things like airborne. So it's like, it's older population, so that's two of the critical things that, that in so many people in one area. So we watch it. Nothing's been serious there. Keep your fingers, I keep my fingers crossed every day, but the people have been really good to deal with that. Do you have any questions of me?
I just want to make a comment that I'm glad to hear that you are touching base with Northbrook 1, because I did have a call over the weekend from a resident of Berlin who was concerned about them. Okay. So I appreciate that.
No, I hope you have enjoyed the daily sit reps from MEMA. Just forward them out. I look at those every morning or in the evening. Usually come later in the evening and then send them to you either at night or in the morning. So it's like, a lot of good information there on, I think it's real facts in, where we are as a state in our area. And they have a lot of good information there if you pick through it and, and, you know, open up some of the apps that they got on, attached to it. So it's like.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, keeps you in the loop, you know, and it's like, it's good stuff to know. And it's, just shows you the, the amount of work that the Commonwealth has put into their program. And it's like, and I think we're starting to see a brighter side of it.
Yeah, let's hope so.
I hope so, too.
Chris, I'll get into it later, but I can confirm that all the people at Northbrook 1 and 2 have been reached out in our senior calls, so they've been contacted.
Good, that's good. Yep, good group to keep in arms-length, you know what I mean, like, keep them kind of close. So it's like, and they're enjoyable to be with. They can teach you a lot if you listen to them. So it's like, it's a good group there.
Yeah. Any other questions for Chief?
Stay safe.
Yeah, please do.
Yep, we try.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
We will move on to your town administrator report, Margaret.
Hey. Well, Chief, this is just adding on to the whole COVID-19 thing. I did a town administrator report for the April 13 meeting, and I did just an addendum for today, because it appears like rapid-fire, rapid-fire updates around here. So Chief Clark, Chief Galvin, and I did a 15, 16-minute public service message on April 13 that's been uploaded to the town's website and Facebook page. And I believe it's being broadcast on Berlin Cable Access TV. So we're going to try to do this periodically. Maybe we'll get to it. Maybe we'll be able to do another one this week. But I think every week and a half or two weeks is what we'd like to do.
Yes, there's people trying to get in. I got a text from June, and I got a text from Janet, so I didn't want you to go too far down the line, Margaret, until we can figure out how to get people in. So Mary, I don't know, is there anybody waiting? Because June just texted and said, is there a meeting tonight? And I wrote it back and said, yes.
Yep, so if you look, there are zero attendees sitting in the queue. So I don't know what to say. You guys are all on equal footing. Everyone should be able to log in. I just sent Janet the meeting number, but I don't see her answering me. I also sent Peter the number. I can also send June the number. But I don't, you can see, right, that there's zero attendees in the audience. So if you're asking me.
I see seven. I see seven participants now.
Now I don't know who Johnny Quinn is, but in they come. Who is Johnny Quinn? Hold on one second, please.
Probably Ornella.
It's Johnny Quinn, because it's Ornella.
Okay, I'm going to put you back in the audience. I just wanted to know who you were. Okay, stand by. There she goes back down to an attendee. Okay. And then we have another attendee. So Ornella found her way in. June's here.
Yep, June's coming in.
Do, well, I wasn't going to promote her unless you want, do you.
No, she just didn't know if the meeting had started. That's all I was asking.
She found it. I didn't even send her the number yet, so there's, that's the answer, I guess.
Okay, so as long as she managed to get in and Ornella managed to get in, obviously, there's not a problem.
Okay.
Kind of like a wedding. There's always going to be a glitch.
And late coverage.
Anyway, all right, so back to what I was, I was on COVID-19. So yeah, Chief Clark, Chief Galvin, and I did a 16-minute public service message on April 13. And that's up on the town's website, Facebook page, and then broadcast on Berlin Cable Access. The, we just received a small CARES Act, Federal CARES Act Distribution of just over $2,000. And that is relevant to Medicare payments made by the town. So when there is an employer who has made Medicare payments, apparently, they are receiving CARES Act distributions. So we have received that, but I'm communicating with the Board of Health to determine if that money just needs to be considered general fund revenues or if there are any public health purposes that we could use that money for. I just want to remind everybody that, and we keep, we keep reiterating this. I know Chief Galvin's been, been doing this, but I know it can feel overwhelming during times like this, given that it's been an extended time to be inundated with COVID-19 messages, to be stuck at home, to not be able to talk to people face-to-face in person. And so there are resources that people can call. So my town administrator reports over the last few weeks, I have had a couple of resources listed. And there's also something on the town's homepage, I think under News. Chief Galvin put something together with other support resources for people if they just want to talk to somebody or if they need more, more focused resources to get them through this time. So I just want to reiterate that. I'm going to jump right over to my addendum. Council on Aging Director. So that position has been posted now for quite a while. And we do have a small pool of potentially qualified candidates. So I would like to go ahead and proceed with scheduling preliminary interviews with a, with a panel. And then final interviews with the board would follow. I know this is a tough time to be thinking about hiring new staff. And frankly, if we do have a choice, I'd prefer not to have the person start until the emergency's lifted. But at the same time, the Council on Aging needs, needs staff support. And they've gone a long time without it. They've done remarkably well. But just having attended their meeting today, I think they'd all liked, they'd all like to see some staff support. And in fact, they designated one of their members to sit on the preliminary interview panel. So I would just like the board's support to go ahead and proceed with that process. Library Septic System. This is moving forward now. Evan Carloni, the project, the, the project manager, has submitted plans to Neshova for their review. And my hope is that Neshova Bill will bring them to our Board of Health for approvals at the board's next meeting, next week, next Monday. I am going to be asking the board to authorize the chair to sign documents that will have to be filed at the Registry of Deeds. This is because, they call it an innovative Septic System, the Presby System, that's going to be installed at the library, that there has to be record of that and that the owner recognizes that it's an innovative system. So I've given the board and your agenda packets tonight the forms that you'll see next week. Solar Pilot Negotiations. Our team is continuing our, our meetings. And we do have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, April 28, where we will be meeting with the solar developer to discuss the town's data and what we, what we want to see. Lisa, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I mean.
We're just, yeah, we're just.
See what they come back with.
Yeah.
After we present what we have from the consultant.
Okay. All right, ambulance billing. The accountant is going to come with the fire chief at the board's next meeting to recommend writing off aged accounts that are from the 10-year period, 2005 to April 2014. The number, the total number is high, but again, it's for 10-year periods. So the, the number is going to be a little over $100,000. The board does have the authority to write off these aged and uncollectible accounts. June is working furiously to see if there's any chance that we can, that we could still collect on some of the newer accounts. So you'll get updates on that next week. But the board should expect to have a recommendation to write off the aged and uncollectible accounts. On the Tolman property, the CMRPC's contract engineer is ready to go to the site. And so there is a tentative appointment for later this week where they are going to meet with the fire marshal at the site. As you know, the town, Mr. Tolman gave the town authorization to access the property. So that's all been provided, and the engineer wants to actually get on the site and start looking around. So that's a good thing. On S.A. Farm, the, a reminder that, well, I guess information only. The site is under the state's oversight and enforcement control. The town really, town of Berlin has no authority in this matter except to continue to advocate for the residents on that side of, of the town. So I had a conversation with Mary-Ju Pigzly at DEP on Friday. She is the Central Regional Director. They are to be providing access information to their online reporting system, their portal. And the town is going to in turn share it with, with Berlin residents. And I'm happy to share it with the town of Northbrook if they don't already have information on this. But I did not receive it today. I spoke with her today. And I am going to stay on it to make sure I get that information. For the board's information, the Sudbury Valley Trustees have voted to make an offer to acquire the, the so-called Laura property. And CONCOM, as you know, is very interested in the town acquiring these properties from SVT once the property's in their hands. But I've previously cautioned, and I have to continue to caution, that the town's available funds are highly uncertain at this time. We don't know when we're going to have more fiscal certainty. So before we can actually commit to any funding from the town's available funds or the cash reserves, we have to continue to closely monitor our own financial situation. And I don't anticipate making a recommendation on this matter until there is more fiscal certainty. So I'm guessing sometime in the fall, which the CONCOM is already aware of, and SVT is also already aware of, that this couldn't go to a town meeting before late fall. So I just want to give an update, and as I get more updates, I'll share them. And then finally, on Northbrook Village 2, Chief briefed you on, on the things that are happening down there. So at this time, there are some existing concerns that have been expressed by residents. And there are still some residents that have been displaced by the water, the water issue they had there a couple of months ago. And so my recommendation at this point, after, after the board receives input from Chief Clark and Chief Galvin, that the board send a letter to the, to the regional manager at Maloney Properties and copy the letter to our federal and state legislative stakeholders as well as to any applicable federal and state agencies that would be stakeholders, expressing the board's concern and interest on behalf of the residents in seeing that this work continues at Northbrook Village 2. I would ask that the letter include the request for written confirmation that the work continue and it's, and it won't stop. And it's in fact progressing, and that the board requests details on measurable progress and an estimated timeline for completion. So I think to have the board's backing in this, if the board is so inclined to prepare correspondence to Maloney properties, I think that it would, it would show that there is a vested interest beyond the fire chief, the police chief, and by the board itself to assure that the residents are taken care of. So I'd like your thoughts on that. And if you support the idea, we can go ahead and prepare correspondence for your meeting next week. That's all I have.
Do you want our feedback now?
Sure, I'll take your feedback.
Peg or Lisa, do you have any feedback?
Oh, just, I would say go ahead and write the letter.
I agree. Peg?
You know, I mean, we need to take care of the seniors in town, so whatever we can do, that would be great.
So what we'll do then is we'll consult with Chief Clark and Chief Galvin. And Mary, would you be willing to prepare a letter on behalf of the board for the board to sign next week? Okay, terrific. And so over the next week, we'll consult with the chiefs, and we'll get that ready.
Great, thank you.
Great.
That's it for my report.
Margaret, I had a question on your original administrative report.
Okay.
You had mentioned possible June 1, I think, pre-meeting?
Yeah, I'm a little hesitant about setting that date, because we just don't know what's going to happen. But I would like to set a date about two weeks prior to the town meeting to do a, the pre-town meeting and budget forum.
Right.
I'd like to do that.
Do you want to do it on a, on a Monday? I believe it's a Monday.
I could, I'm happy to do it on any, on any night. I just have to round up the administrative finance team and make sure that all of our, our article proponents and the board and finance committee are all available for, for whatever date we choose. So I can go ahead and work on a date.
And there's no reason you can't do that as a Zoom meeting.
No, there's no reason we couldn't do that as a Zoom meeting.
Exactly. We might get more attendance that way, honestly, but.
I guess depending on if there's a lot of things on the agenda, if you wanted to do it that night also, it might, it might be rather lengthy.
Yeah, that's true. We could do it on that, whatever that Thursday night is, maybe, or.
Fourth.
Thank you. I couldn't.
We could shoot for, yeah, we could shoot for Thursday, June 4, maybe. And let me just, let me just get ahold of everyone who, who would be kind of presenting or would be panelists for that.
Yeah, and I think in the, in the past, the ones that I've attended have mostly been town employees and committee members. So, and I think other people watch it. But I think most of the people who actually attend have been those with vested interest.
Okay, all right. I'll shoot for June 4. And I'll just send an email around tomorrow and ask, ask people's thoughts on that. But we'll tentatively say that date.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to Old Business. An update on the 2019 Annual Town Report. We have one?
Um, I do. Let's see if I, I don't have any updates.
I didn't think I'd see any in the Google Drive.
No, I looked too. I, I reached out late, late this afternoon after I'd gotten an email from a member of the committee. And I don't have any updates at this moment. But I can give you an update on my end. Was it last week? I reached out to the committee because I knew there were some concerns about staying within the budget appropriation. I reached out to the committee and I asked that they, given our, our spending freeze directive, I asked that they pay as close attention to possible as, to cost constraints. Look, if, if the cover needs to be black and white instead of color, or if we need to reduce the font a little bit to keep the number of pages down, just to try to stay within the appropriation. Our financial situation, I don't want to say our financial situation is dire, but we're trying, we're trying to encourage everyone to stay within their budget appropriations. I know it's difficult, planning far in advance. But a lot of times, we have to do that in this world.
Question. So in the email that you sent out a little while ago, Margaret, if you look backwards, there's probably past 23 years, we've only gone with one printer, I think with the exception of one year. We haven't gone with them since '85.
Okay.
Do we not look at any other printer people to look at, you know, possibilities to get class? Or is it kind of the same mentality of, we've always gone here, we'll always go here, everyone else goes here? I mean, to me, it's kind of penny wise, pound foolish.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I asked last week when I was, when I was asking them to consider all kinds of cost efficiencies. I did say, is there a printer around here that could do it less expensively? Now, the cost of the printing, the town report itself, doesn't fall into any kind of quote or bid threshold. But 30B, Chapter 30B says best business practice. So it's always a good practice to look around and price things out, if at all possible.
I think you could certainly look, but, but my guess, based on what I, I know about this, we are one of the last ones who prints it like this, and he wants to keep us. So he does make accommodations, and he also has made accommodations for the typically last-minute order that we have given him, you know, to the point where he's driven it over here and different things. So I think, given the situation that we've been in, I don't think a whole lot of printers would have put up with that. And, and the prices are, I mean, most people do, in the area, get theirs printed by this place. This is kind of one of the things they do. So I don't think that we're getting, taking advantage of cost-wise, if I were to. Like I said, you can certainly look, but I don't think that this is probably going to gain us a whole lot by trying to find another printer.
So what about the timeframe? We had put, when Barry was on the call a couple of weeks ago, we put a timeframe of this Friday. What happens if we don't get it? Because, you know, again, to Lisa's point, we always seem to run right up to the last minute regardless of whatever day, month that we have. Oh, we have plenty of time, we have plenty of time, the time goes away. So what are we doing now to hold the committee speak to the fire, pretty much to say, we told you Friday, we've given you plenty of notice, you've gone quiet. What are we doing, Margaret?
Oh, Peg.
And I, and I don't need an answer now.
These folks are volunteers. You do have to keep that in mind. If you want to bring it in-house, which, you know, might make sense to, to put that more in the realm of, of something that staff does, then, you know, that's another thing. But when you're working with volunteers, you have to be careful about how you're demanding.
But what I can say.
April 24th, right?
April 24th was the date.
Yeah, Friday.
So let's wait and see.
Okay.
We should probably have this on the agenda again.
On the 24th. Yeah, I can tell you that when the revised town meeting calendar that you'll be looking at tonight, I plugged in the date of May 11th, that the board would actually direct the immediate printing of the town reports and things. You can certainly talk about that date. But that date would provide about, what, six weeks, five and a half weeks to get it printed and mailed out, which should be sufficient. So I will send a reminder to the committee and ask them, I'll just send a reminder to them about the 24th.
Okay. Do you have an update for us on the 2020 annual town meeting warrant?
The annual town meeting warrant, I have a few, yeah. So those have been just carried, and I want to thank Mary. I sent a special email to Mary and Barry, knowing that they in the past have gone through article by article, and I asked for their feedback, and Mary has given me feedback, which I have not yet incorporated into the draft warrant, but I will look at that. Meanwhile, there are a couple of things I just wanted to make note of. First of all, the Conservation Commission met on Saturday, but I do not know at this point if they have come up with another effective date for the plastic bag ban. That is something that we're going to, we're going to need. So hopefully they did, I just have not heard anything yet. Um, the Council on Aging Ban, you're going to be talking about this a little later. This article will potentially be able to be removed because there is other funding to cover the cost of the amount over the state's appropriation. There is another article on the warrant, and I should mention that I have plugged in motions under most of these articles. Again, they're all in draft form, but there had been a request at your prior meeting to include motions on the warrant. The budget article itself will not have motions on the warrant. There won't be motions for the budget on the warrant, so that would be a separate motion sheet. Anyway, back to the warrant itself. The article, the assessors had requested a placeholder for an article to fund appraisals of utility, personal property to comply with new DOR standards. I've now reached out to the Board of Assessors and asked that, I have asked if they'd be willing to release $9,000 in assessors' overlay surplus for the purpose of funding this specific expenditure in the budget. And that means, so it would be identified, the $9,000 from overlay surplus would be identified as a funding source in the budget motion. It would be for this purpose, and this article would be able to be removed. So you wouldn't have this extra article, you'd just have overlay surplus, and either the assessor's expense line or the revaluation line would be increased by the same $9,000 that this funding is coming from. I asked that the board, I asked that the board continue to review the capital grid. Right now, on the capital grid, you have the fire EMS scuba replacement, fire EMS personal protective equipment, police vehicle replacement, and police video security upgrades. Those are shown, and those would be funded from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds. The total of those four items would come to $171,200. And the last item on the grid is for Highway Department, it's the parking lot repair, and it's $205,000 that would be funded from free cash. That is a grant-dependent item, so my recommendation would be to keep it on the capital grid for now. And I think those are the only comments I have. So yeah, it looks like, I mean, there's a potential that we might be able to drop two articles, which would be a good thing. So I'll keep watching that and let you know where we stand.
Okay. Do we have an update on the 2020 annual town meeting action calendar?
Lots of updates. It's a long calendar now. So it's extended pretty far out. So I put the heavy black solid line between the dates that we kind of realized there was something that was going to have to change as far as the town meeting date. So right before March 30th, you see the heavy black line. You are now at April 21st. So this is just a continuation of the review of the annual town meeting warrant articles. It also says that you'd be reviewing the town meeting motions. Those are shown on the draft warrant itself, and we'll continue, we can continue that discussion at your next meeting. And you were supposed to review the status of the draft annual town report, which I'll send the reminder on. But just, your meetings now go out for several weeks, several weeks before before the town, June 22nd town meeting. But you'll see, I noted a little while ago on Monday, May 11th, that's the date that I've plugged in for the board to direct that the annual town reports be printed immediately and mailed to each voting household, to try to keep that whole process on track. There's really, honestly, there's, this year with the extension, there's, of the town meeting date, there's plenty of time for just about everything, with the exception of our financial uncertainties at the moment. So everything else, we should have time to accomplish.
Have you sent the calendar over to Lori?
I haven't sent this calendar over yet.
Okay, send that over, just so she has dates.
Would the board like to approve this, then? So I can send it.
Is that in the Google Drive? I didn't see it in the Google Drive.
It is. It was, it was in the town meeting folder.
Oh, that's right, okay, yes, then I did see it.
Okay.
Are you okay if I make a motion to approve?
Sure.
Motion to approve.
And seconded.
Okay. Motion on the floor and seconded, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Pete, aye?
Wasaki, aye.
Aye, Stone, aye.
Okay.
And Carolyn said the new date for the bag ban is November 1st.
Ah ha, there you go, okay, thank you. I'll make note of that now.
Okay, do we have any update on the 2020 and the 21 budgets?
2020 budget, as you know, a spending freeze administrative directive had to be issued back on March 25th. And prior to that, the administrative finance team sent a memo to the board and the finance committee with some updates and recommendations. I guess, unfortunately, those, the updates are actually coming to light. You know, we anticipated back on March 20th that our Q4 revenues would decline, if we'd see particular declines in the meals and rooms tax revenues. We also, we also anticipated slowing down of construction. We have, there is a slight decline already in building permit revenues, so we're going to keep an eye on that as we move forward. We took some actions that needed to be taken. We noted in that memo that the postponement of annual town meeting would help, will give us some time to plan with all the fiscal uncertainty that we anticipated. We also said at that time that we would have to look at budgetary controls, and it was after that that we issued the spending freeze directive. And that was issued on March 25th, noting that we, at that point, were anticipating immediately and potentially significant impacts to FY '20 state revenues and likely local revenues as well. I had a recent conversation with Representative Naughton's legislative aide. One of my concerns at this point, we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, and one of my concerns was mid-year 9C cuts, which would affect our unrestricted general government aid and potentially other things as well. He said that that is very unlikely, that we should be able to get through FY '20 fairly well. I think with these, with these cost containment, with these expense containment measures in place, I also think that we're going to get through this fiscal year fairly well. But FY '21 is going to be a whole different ballgame. We have, and it's so far-reaching, I'm going to move into FY '21 budget now. The FY '21 impacts are just so potentially far-reaching, it's amazing. We already know that our state lotteries are, that our state lottery revenues are taking a hit, and that does directly impact our unrestricted general government aid. We suspect that there might be some decline in motor vehicle excise revenues because people may not be as quick to buy new cars. We know that meals and hotel room excise is going to be suffer, is going to be suffering for some months longer. The licensing and permits, I just mentioned that we're already starting to see a bit of a decline in our local, in our local permit revenues, and we expect that to continue into the new fiscal year. Fines and forfeits, we see court fines that are turned over to the town. Courts aren't open right now, we're not going to be seeing some of those revenues. So those are going to significantly decline for the period of time that the courts, that the courts are closed. And then finally, interest on investments, I don't think, I think that's pretty self-explanatory, that our investment income is going to take a nosedive. So we do have some things that we absolutely need to watch, and revisions that we need to make to our FY '21 revenues. Now, the finance committee has been working on level fund budget scenarios, but, you know, we've stated, when I say we, that's the administrative finance team, this really isn't a one-size-fits-all, so we have to watch very carefully those lines that include non-discretionary costs, so contract costs and other obligations, our assessments to regional agencies, our insurance premiums. Those aren't things that can be necessarily level-funded. So we have to, we have to really do this line by line. This is, this can't be a one-size-fits-all. So I think the finance committee recognizes it, and they had a long conversation at their last meeting about the approach. But what it means for the board, and my recommendations to the board, is that I think, I don't know, unless anybody has any other ideas, I don't know how to approach this other than kind of, starting again, you know, the board was pretty well through. I was pretty well through most of the budget lines in my recommendations to the board prior to COVID-19, and now we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to go line by line again. So that's what I will anticipate doing over the next, over the next several weeks here. And meanwhile, since I'm on such a, since I'm on such a chair, meanwhile, we are still waiting for DLS guidance to come out that is to follow the emergency legislation that's been passed. And there have been several, there have been different bills that have been passed. The one that I'm referring to, the one where we could carry our free cash into next fiscal year if we had to go into a 112 budget scenario. Those are things that DLS has not, the 112 budget scenario itself, DLS has not provided guidance on yet. So we sit and we wait for DLS to provide their guidance and do what we possibly can do. I think what I'll do is I'll just come back to the board and make recommendations on various budget lines that we know need to be funded, that I know that I would recommend budgeting at certain levels. So we just need to, we just need to do this again. We've already rehearsed, so why not do it again?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so.
Margaret.
Well, this is, all of this is just, all of this is just an extraordinary situation. And I think the good news is that we have been through a lot of the budget already. So there was already that familiarity, it's not like we're, you know, starting from ground zero. We're starting from a point that we knew where we stood before, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
To move on to new business. You were going to give us an update on the applicant who's proposing a community outreach meeting noticed by remote participation?
Yep, so the board, you have the draft plan that the proponent had submitted to the board. So what I am, what I am going to recommend now is that the board take no action on this. I contacted CCC again today to see what the status is on their guidance that they're issuing. I think I mentioned that the CCC is issuing guidance on virtual community, I'm sorry, virtual community outreach meetings. And so I think that it's probably not wise for the board to move forward with its own approvals of any plan until the CCC's guidance is out. So I prefer to wait for that, and this can come back to the board at your next meeting or as soon as I hear back from the CCC.
Okay, so Margaret, question on that.
Sure.
I know that we're waiting, and I know it's probably the right thing to do. What is the impact, do you think, that the person for this establishment is going to have? I mean, everyone's in the same boat, so it's not like he can run over to Hudson or stuff like that. Or, well, let me rephrase. We may be waiting, but another town may not waiting. They just may say, hey, opportunity for money to come into the town, let's go. Do you have any feeling whether he's going to say, thanks, you know, got to go, or I got you, I'll hang in there?
Yeah, so I'm trying, I'm trying not to stall. You know, at the same time, I recognize that the state hasn't considered these essential retail, retail marijuana establishments as essential businesses. They're still, they're still able to sell medical, for medical purposes and things. But I see your point, Peg, and I think that it is in our best interest as the town to move forward with this in good faith, but I also, I also don't think that it would be wise to move forward with local guidance on, or guidelines on virtual community outreach meetings without hearing from the CCC first. So the sooner we get that, the sooner the board can take it up.
No, I get it, I understand, I just, you know, playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, there's, there are a lot of things that we need to be really looking closely at. You know, opportunities for new revenues, you know, we look at the solar, the solar pilot agreement. We look at other things because we don't know what's going to happen with our established revenues.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay, no worries, thanks.
Sure.
You might want to give them a poke.
I did today, yeah, I contacted my contact at the CCC today and asked how they were coming along.
Okay. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the Treasure Collector request to adopt local option provisions of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 relative to tax payment deadlines.
So Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 is the infamous emergency legislation. That was the big, that was the big initial emergency legislation that was passed. So Dennis has three, he has recommendations first to, that the board approve delaying the property tax deadline, currently May 1st, to June 1st, after which time interest would begin accruing. He also has another recommendation that interest and other penalties on excise bills, on certain excise bills be waived, or that you give the authorization to the Treasure Collector to waive the interest and other penalties on those excise bills. And finally, there's going to be, I've prepared three motions for the board tonight. The third is that the Treasure Collector be directed to post notice to taxpayers immediately of the board's approvals on these items. So is there anything else that I can explain with these? Again, these are all related to the COVID-19 emergency legislation. This is something that is not normally allowed. This is specific to this emergency, and it is a form of tax relief. I told Dennis and. I told Dennis and I'll tell the board that I do support his recommendations on this. I think that the taxpayers could use a bit of relief here. So I, I do support his recommendations.
Hey, question, Margaret, you mentioned two June 1st, so does that mean bills are due on June 1st or bills are due June 2nd?
Bills are due June 1st, bills are due June 1st, what's, what date does June 1st fall on though?
Hang on, yes.
It's a Monday, they're due on June 1st, they're due by June 1st.
Okay.
June 1st is the deadline. Now, with regards.
So the postmark truly can be no later than the 30th of May, correct? Post offices aren't open on the 31st, so you can't say, but I put it in the mail.
Well, right.
And, and. Treasure's hands by.
That's right, must be, yes, must be received by June 1st. Now, just so folks know, we do have a drop box now in the, in the front lobby of the building, so folks could just put the thing, put up the bill in the drop box too. That's another option for them.
Question?
Yes, online is another option.
I feel like I'm the, I'm the teacher, are you the student?
Yes.
Hey.
Thank you, Mrs. Keefe. So received by June 1st, Dennis leaves at 5:00, I drive down at quarter past 5:00 knowing that Dennis isn't there. I mean, I, I don't think people are going to do that, but it might be like, oh crap, I've had it in my car for a week, so is it in Dennis's hand by the time he leaves or is it in the green box by the time he opens it on the Tuesday?
Peg, I don't, I don't want, well, I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for Dennis in that regard, Dennis, Dennis.
Otherwise, I mean, I'm sure this is the same thing that happens every time and I know that Dennis makes a judgment call on that every single time that we have taxes due.
I know, but there's already been people that have reached out to me to ask, I told them to tune in tonight, sure that something would be posted, so I'm just trying to say one, two, three, done.
I think the best recommendation is to, you know, not leave it to the last minute.
I, I, the notice is, the notice is going to say exactly this, the due date of your real and personal property tax bill has been extended to June 1, 2020. June 1, 2020 is the new due date, even if the due date for payment on your enclosed or previously mailed tax bill is April 1, 2020 or May 1, 2020, it's going to say May 1. I'm not going to speak for Dennis. I'll ask him that question, but I would say folks now have a one month extension of the tax.
And typically that's on his end of business day.
Yeah, please plan accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to motion that in accordance with section 10A, 1 through 3 of chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, that we authorize the treasurer collector to waive any interest and penalties on property tax bills due May 1, 2020, from May 1, 2020 to June 1, 2020.
I'll second that. Peg's busy.
No, I'm looking at my notes. So we're taking these one at a time, so it's going to be the property tax then the excise tax?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to.
So we got a motion and a second on the floor, let's take a vote. Keefe, I.
Roy Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, do you want to?
Yep.
Say anything more before the second one, Margaret, or do you want Lisa to go on and read the second?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I motion that in accordance with section 11 of chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, we authorize the treasurer collector to waive the interest in any other penalties for late payment of any excise with a due date on or after March 10, 2020, when payment is made after its respective due date, but before June 30, 2020.
Second. See, look, that wasn't even a question, that was a yes, okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, let's take a vote. Keefe, I.
Roy Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, and the third one?
I motion that we direct the treasurer collector to immediately post notice to taxpayers of these accepted local options on the homepage of the Town of Berlin's official website and Facebook account and through Berlin's Code Red Reverse 911 Call System in accordance with DLS bulletins 2020 through 2002.
2020 dash 02.
And addendum 2020 dash 03.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, let's take a vote. Keefe, I.
Roy Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay.
Well, thank you all.
And thank Dennis for his work too.
Sure thing. I'll ask him to get the notice ready for tomorrow posting. We're posting tomorrow.
Hey, so do I get a credit because I paid on time? Do I get $10 off next year?
No.
Only if your card appreciates.
Thank you, Peg.
Checking.
All right, moving on with the vote, a vote with regard to the procurement of a council on aging van, this is a long time coming.
It was. So the town is going to get a new COA van and a Worcester Regional Transit Authority is, has, is required under the, the state budget appropriation to conduct the procurement. And the cost for the van is, the total cost is $61,708, which means we had a $60,000, we had a $60,000 legislative appropriation, so we needed to come up with a supplemental or the, the funding for the overage of the 60. And council on aging voted, voted today at their meeting to fund that $1,708 from the COA formula grant. So the, my recommendation to you from April 14th is now outdated, you only need to, I'm only asking that you approve WRTA's procurement of the van quoted.
So moved.
And a second from Peg.
Yeah, second, and then I have a question.
Okay, there's a second, what's your question?
So WRTA, Margaret, does this mean we have to stay in Worcester County, can we drive over the line to Marlboro, Hudson?
This is Berlin's van, they are simply procuring it, the title's in Berlin's name, yep, everything's going to be in Berlin's name, this is Berlin's van.
Can I drive it?
Get in line, get in line, seems like the entire COA wants to drive it too.
I'll volunteer to drive at night when, you know, they can't see, so I got it.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty neat buggy.
Yeah. Thank you for your hard work in getting that for us.
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you. All right, board questions and comments. Can I go first?
Of course. Why, did you see my, did you see my piece of paper like fly through the screen at one point?
No. I just wanted to make a comment which goes along with the posting that we put on our website, that we're here for the public and every department has contact information on the townofberlin.com. So rather than going to social media to get your questions answered, take a look at the townofberlin.com and contact the appropriate department.
Here, here.
Okay, that's all I got.
And I have just, I'd like to encourage people to request their absentee ballots now so that we don't overburden the town clerk's office if we can all sort of do that early and not hit her all at once right before the election, I think she would really appreciate that.
Okay. Hey.
And actually, Lisa's point goes into one of my points, so over the past week or so, I worked with Bob Blair and members of Council on Aging and other volunteers that Bob wrangled up and he divided the list of 900 seniors amongst us and we all gave a call to check in on them. And I can tell you that all the folks that I spoke to were extremely appreciative of the calls of somebody taking the time to check in and say hi for that. In fact, I had a woman that I spoke with last week, she called me today and said, hey, I need a mask, where can I get one? So I picked up the phone and called Peggy Sardell and said, I need two, and she's on it and she's going to deliver them tomorrow. So, you know, hats off to Bob Blair and Council on Aging and every other volunteer that he wrangled up to do it, it was a lot of fun. I asked Bob if he was going to do it again, he said more than likely since he got a lot of good feedback from the folks in town, so. And as part of that, you know, Lisa, to your point, as I was chatting with folks, I reminded them that the meeting had shifted, the election had shifted, that more than likely we're going to have a reduced hours for voting and that it would be in their best interest to reach out and get an absentee ballot and pointed them to the town website. So hopefully that will help, maybe we can do it again in a month or so, you know, to remind people to do that. So that was one. With that, when I had brought up like a Berlin So Night, I had reached out to Louise Janda and Evy and Peggy Sardell and asked them, you know, were the seniors okay for masks? And come to find out, there was a woman Cheryl Robadere, I hope I'm not killing her name, she volunteered to make masks, so I reached out to Fran Gill at Food Pantry and said, how you doing? And she said, good, by the way, can we have 40 masks? So Peggy got on the horn to Cheryl and Cheryl got the mask back to Peggy and Bob Blair to deliver. So another, another good heart story with that for people reaching out, so happy to be part of that and hats off to Peggy Sardell and Bob who are busily driving around town distributing masks. And Bob showed up at my house with them too, complete with gloves, mask and a vase of flowers to say thank you, so that was awesome. Speaking of which, and Chief Clark, I'm glad that you're still on the phone with us. So we had reached out a couple of weeks ago, Mary, I think you paced, posted it on the Town Berlin website and then I stole it and put it on Berlin Neighbors Connect and Berlin Residents United about house numbers. And I know as I've been driving around to nowhere around town, there's not a lot of house numbers out there and, you know, obviously Chief, you know, had brought this up at our coffee talk, if you need help and they can't find you, there's not a lot that they're going to be able to do. So I put the information out online, you know, five inch reflective numbers, you know, for your mailbox, front and back on your house. I, you know, granted, not that savvy, but I offered to help put them up, Chip Durant, so Chief, you know, to your guys, he stood up and said, I'll help. Elaine McDonald up on Ball Hill, she stood up and said, I'll help. So I guess right now where I'm stuck at, and I've been looking around, Chief, do you know of anywhere where we could buy like bulk five inch reflective numbers? I looked at Home Depot, I looked at Lowe's, I looked on Amazon and it was, I can buy a number, but it would be awesome to try and buy a bag of numbers so that if folks stood up and said, hey, I need one, you know, I need, you know, I need a number that we could just go over and put them up so you can find them. So any idea maybe where to look for these numbers?
I think mostly, in my experience, most people get them at, like you said, like Home Depot, Lowe's, like that, but maybe we can work some of the connections that are in town that have relationships with those people and maybe can help us, say it's for the seniors, you know what I mean? That we're getting the numbers for and, and maybe get them a little bit of a discount on the cost and things like that if they meet, but it's like, it's the same thing in every town, every town, this, it's not just Berlin, it's like.
I know. Mary actually said here that masked prisoners can also print them, so that may be another avenue to go.
There you go, Mary.
Mary, seriously?
Maybe something we can link up to with transfer station stickers, maybe we can offer them at the same time or do something of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, because I was chatting with Bob today and he said even dropping off the mask, that he drove up and down River Road, didn't realize there was a west and an east, you know, trying to find or that you left Berlin, went into Hudson, came back into Berlin, you know, for houses. So anything that we can do, Chief, to help you guys, you know, fire EMS police, and if I say I'm at, you know, 40 Lyman, you're going to know where to go up the road and there's my, you know, numbers bright and shiny. So, I mean, Mary, if you have any information on how we can get the masked prisoners to maybe print them and give them the specifics, that would rock. And I, you know, and I know that there's a freeze before Margaret says anything, I know.
Oh, I didn't know, I wasn't going to say that.
You know, I'd like to say that I'm more than willing to pitch in, you know, because I'm getting up in that age bracket too, that, you know, if I fall down the stairs and call for help, that I want Chief to come rolling up the road. I prefer you to come up and not Sharon to come down the driveway, thank you.
Is this also something we could maybe put into the tax bills? A note just saying, hey, do you have your house numbers, you know, something just reminding people of that?
And where they could get them?
And where they could get them.
I am aware that other towns have received grants to do the green reflective street numbers that you put, you have, you've probably seen them in some towns where they're actually posted at the entrance to people's driveways, they're like on a little stand, Chief, you know which ones I'm talking about, they're on a green background with highly reflective numbers and I'm, I'm, I can reach out to some of my colleagues to see if they have, if their towns have received grants for these particular safety reflective numbers, if, if you, if you're interested in me doing that.
I suspect part of this is, it's just not something people think about, so maybe part of it really is the reminder that, hey, this is important.
Yeah, I actually went and, and to Lowe's and bought numbers and they're not cheap.
No, they're not.
They're not cheap, they're about $4 or $5 for each number.
Yeah.
Tim carved them for our house, so.
Yeah, all right.
So we'll think of something.
Okay, two more. So Margaret, you had talked a little earlier on construction, so during my round of calls with folks, there was quite a bit of concern brought up by people, by the contractors over at River Bridge and how they see him skipping across the street, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or the place to get snacks, they don't have any masks. So the question was, since there's already an order by Baker, Governor Baker, to say you should be wearing one, but the construction people aren't wearing them, what can we do?
So as you know, they, the residents who, who voiced their concerns might be aware that that construction site was actually shut down for a few days because there were compliance issues with the COVID-19 orders. The Board of Health at this point is getting daily construction reports, they actually have on, an onsite contracted nursing service, I don't think that they control, they can control what the individuals do off site if they're running across the street, but when they are at the construction site, they need to be checking in, they have, they've had to set up all these hand sanitizing stations, they have temperatures taken, they've had to fill out compliance forms, they've had to set, fill out acknowledgement forms. I think the only thing that we can do as a town is to continue to spot check and I think the Board of Health, I can follow up with the Board of Health, but I do believe the Board of Health is continuing to spot check and I do know they're getting the daily site reports from the construction company. So we can, we can check on that. Chief, I don't know if your department's been down at, at River Bridge over the last week or so since they reopened, but, and I know Board of Health has too, so.
No, we were down there on one of the new buildings for an alarm investigation and all the staff that ran into, and it was later in the day, it was like 4:30 ish, 4 o'clock, all the staff had their masks on while they were on the ground and like Margaret said, it's challenging to enforce that when they go across the street to the, to the shell there to, to get lunch or whatever, but it's like, I know, when you're inside the fence, they got their mask on, that's a minimum. And I haven't seen anybody since what, the event that Margaret talked about without one.
Would it have been pegged that, that these people running across the street happened before it was required to have a mask on?
I don't know, Chris, I mean, I. I don't know, Chris, I mean, I spoke with a couple of residents over the weekend and they mentioned it, so I don't know if it was they saw the person just skipping across the street, if it was a week ago, two weeks ago, I don't know, but I think as more and more news comes out about COVID, as you're driving down around that area and see somebody scooting and there's no mask, there's more of a sense of awareness than there was a month and a half ago.
As they say, if you see something, say something. So if residents do see, for example, if they see multiple people driving into the site, multiple contractors driving into the site in the same car, that's a no-no, you know, they're not supposed to be carpooling, there's no carpooling. So if they see something on the site, they should, they should report it to the town, contact the town, we can contact Board of Health and we can send someone down there.
Okay, all right. And then the last one, which I know is going to be kind of touchy. A resident had reached out to me and wanted to put a blank banner up in the center of town. I convinced the person not to hang it from Route sixty-two, the overpass, that they actually put it in the ground somewhere. So I had reached out to First Parish Church in the center of town and kind of told them what the resident wanted to do was to put up a banner, you know, as a show of thanks to all the essential people, you know, Chief, you guys, EMS, fire, you know, nurses, doctors, physicians, anybody in the family, grocery store workers, just to say, you know, thank you from the heart. So I got a letter back saying that the church approved of it. So now what we're trying to do is come up with guidelines for that, because obviously, you know, and I had brought this up to Margaret and both Chiefs and to Fire Marshal Litchwell and to Highway Dave Guy, you know, about this, just to make them aware of it. There's going to be concerns, you don't want people writing a message and leaning on a post to write a message, you know, you don't want somebody's ungloved hand, you don't want somebody sneezing on it, et cetera, et cetera. So we know that's going to be a challenge to do that, so it's not something that we're going to do right away. Maybe I can convince the person who's donating the banner, just to don't, just to write on the banner herself and put it up.
Yeah, why can't it just be thank you to all the frontline workers?
Well, I think that she was looking for like notes, you know, so if someone saw a special little picture, they would know it's from their family. I mean, I'm sure that she can, if I can
How about, you know, if we're, if we're going down that road, you know, small, even two dollar donations to the fire department or the police department for those workers or or a hospital or whatever, and we could have a list or something somewhere, but that that seems to make more sense than just writing on a banner.
Yeah, I saw in the item over the weekend, God love the item, that the Clinton Rec Department was actually selling, you know, the signs that all the election signs are on, the plastic that this, with the sticks. They were selling them for ten bucks to raise, to raise money. And you could write your own message and stick it in your lawn and
Were adorable.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be the ideal situation to do. You know, so maybe I can toss that out, but just wanted to keep you up to date that the, you know, church is very much willing to help and actually, Margaret, you know, next year, when I sheepishly ask for trunk or treat again, that the church wants to do a haunted house. So definitely, that's going to take a lot of time and a lot of planning and a lot of people involved, but how cool that the church is definitely, you know, letting the the neighbors kind of like take control of their lawn, which is just the main point that you drive through in town, you're always going to see it, so. More to come on that, but I wanted to let you know.
Well, good luck.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's all I got, my paper's done.
All right. Well, we do not have an executive session scheduled, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Okay.
I really enjoyed sitting through this meeting, I'm, I'm just saying.
Tired, tired.
Standing through it, I have everything right at my fingertips here.
Physically, physically sitting or
Sitting, I am sitting in a chair.
I know, I noticed, I noticed. All right, well, we got a motion in a second, so I will start the vote, Keefe, I.